Good evening, it's now six fifteen and I will call the August eleventh Cedar Spring Public Board meeting to order. And we would rise with the political review.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and with this hope with liberty and fairness for all.
Thank you, and if you would grab a roll call please, and we do have Mr. Schachner for a family issue, and we have trustee Patton who is still.
Okay, trustee Bowser here, trustee Patton excused, trustee Munn.
Here.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Here.
Secretary Slater here, Vice President Schochner excused, and President Reed.
Here, thank you, we just come as a form for this meeting. And that brings us to the adoption of our agenda, and I entertain a motion for as presented.
So, support.
No discussion. Having none, Secretary Slater, yes, Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Munn.
Yeah.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carries. That brings us to gratitude, and I will open up the tables to share gratitude.
I was grateful for the opportunity to tour Beach prior to the meeting and just super exciting to see all the progress that's been made and just beautiful building and I'm just really excited for our staff and our students who get to experience that as well as all of the other renovations and exciting changes on campus, so lots of lots of exciting things to look forward to this fall.
I'm still appreciating that I just think the product console which is yet is just getting more beautiful with the transport is being done, so that's exciting to see. Stevie's been reading about that, I'm getting right with first time.
And I know business is usual for a lot of the teachers who say they do it every year, but the prep work that goes into being ready for the first day of school is no small task. I know I know they're pouring into the into students before they even get here, so that's exciting, I'm thankful for this, and I know we're only a couple weeks away, but that's that's big, that's very, very great.
Yeah, too, I'm grateful for the people that are returning to campus, the staff, teachers, administrators, and students who are back, coaches who are back on campus, it's a great space comes alive again. I'm grateful for progress and I'm grateful for grace. Because where progress leans, we have picked up this now, we're ready, are you okay?
As for representative, we'll probably see them next month. And that brings us to the seven items, and that is then to the motion for as presented. So loads.
Support.
Secretary Slater, yes, Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Munn.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carries. That brings us to discussion portion of our meeting, and we're beginning with the middle school, these different majors, creative, Charlie Everett, sharing.
How are you guys?
Good.
Go ahead, thanks for being here, and it's gorgeous outside, because we'd probably rather be out there, right, bless you. Um, I wanted to chat tonight, oh, do I need a microphone? Just for fun, okay, should I come to that one?
Oh, we can move this over.
Oh, all right, all right, I'll just like hold it or walk around, or, all right. All right, I'm using just my teacher voice, so, um, anyway, we had like our MGM meeting last week, right, already? And I know we were signed up for different buildings throughout the year, and there wasn't one for today, so I thought, well, let's let's show up and chat it up a little bit, so we are entering year two of sixth, seventh, and eighth grade all in one building. Uh, last year was great, to be honest with you, we didn't feel uh, we didn't feel it that much, to be honest, there were, yeah, a couple less than a hundred kids, but but it really flowed pretty well, and we're thankful for that. So, um, we're currently sitting at six hundred ninety-five kids with eight in the hopper for enrollment, which is cool to see. And we are ready for them, we've had great hires come in this year, I think we're adding, not adding, but we're we're filling eight spots, and we're super excited with the different roles we have. But, um, the key things that I wanted to talk about with just engagement and student ownership is truly that, we're building ownership among our students, especially having sixth graders that can come in at like age eleven and eighth graders who can be fourteen, you know, and talking about driver's training and all sorts of other things we don't need to talk about sometimes, right? So, um, we're really working on building that ownership. And a few things I wanted to share with you tonight that we're proud of, um, one, super simple, we're just having our kids literally clean their cafeteria tables. We talked about that a little bit last year, but we just created like a sanitation station. And and we feel like that not only grows their ownership for cleaning up their space and what I'd say kind of common sense, right, take care of your own space. It also shows that appreciation and respect to our custodians who actually worked their day long, all day, bless them, um, to take care of our middle schoolers. So it it just kind of shows that appreciation and that ownership, and and we really see kids hop in. There'll be kids who would just say, hey, do you care if I do like this section this week? Sure, sweetie, go ahead, that'd be awesome, right? So so we've got that going to build that ownership. Second, we we started student jobs that we plan to expand this year, where where kids actually fill out an application, and then they come in and sit down with us for an interview and discuss what their skill sets are and and qualities of what what they want to give to the school. So, um, we're pretty pumped about that, those things range from peer-to-peer support, some kids just want to help out another student, volunteer to sit with someone at lunch, things like that. Um, sometimes it's, uh, if there's a new student, they're willing to have them shadow them for the day or a couple days. Um, and again, just to watch the kids come in and talk about why, like the what, why, and how of these jobs is pretty cool. And and we want to build that in in the culture and nature of our society right now, I think we need kids to to see the what, why, and how of things, you know? And also, we'll have kids just take on like office, office work, they come in on their lunchtime, if it's break time or in between classes, and they bill all of their coffee machines or drop off things to teachers, and and it really, it's a really big boost for them. And it's commonly your your students who you might not think want to do those jobs, really do it, rock it out. And it allows us to have that extra one-on-one time with them too, so we're loving that. And then, um, a a big one, last year I took on announcements, I've just kind of always done that in the morning, and had some students join in with that, to kind of be the voice of the red box, you know? Um, and they started doing that pretty well, we go from classroom to classroom. Well, this upcoming year, I actually have eight students who emailed me in May and set up a formal meeting time, we have lunch together, we met for an hour. They gave me their proposal of what they wanted to do, and these eight sweet students are planning to kick it off in September. They agreed that, well, August was today, you guys should probably just do that, because there's a lot of extra stuff, you know? But they're planning to kick that off, and and as we move into this new phase of what we're calling HAWK time, as kind of our extension or intervention time, that'll be a daily thirty-ish minutes, uh, maybe twenty-eight minutes, don't quote me, five, about that many minutes a day. That we'll be able to have those students specifically meet with me once to twice a week, and they want to create almost a a middle school media class of sorts, like eight presents, obviously, we don't have all the facility for that, but, um, Amy McCarthy's been awesome to come down, do some videos and create some news broadcasts with them, but they're really geeked about that. So we're hoping to build that ownership within within the school that way. So we're we're excited, we're we're pumped to see potentially seven hundred kids enter those doors in a couple of weeks. We've got some nice boosts in the building, I know our front doors look like these front doors now with the the HAWK logos and things on. And so again, we're hoping to just build that ownership and excitement with kids throughout the entire world, so, yes. Any thoughts, questions that that you have? Or if you ever want to hang out with middle schoolers, we're we're happy to take you. It won't be boring, I promise you that. All right, thank you, guys, thanks for being here and doing what you do.
Thank you.
Should I carry this to anyone else?
Yeah.
All right, moving the mic out, welcome right on to twenty twenty-four, twenty-five data summer report, a school improvement update with Kristen, Ron, and.
Hi. Thanks so much, so our, we've been working really hard, um, in the last spring, we did a deep dive into a lot of our data. And we have established a new continuous improvement process, we've had processes in the past, we're just morphing it into a process that, um, not only harnesses the strengths of each building, but puts all those strengths together for some more vertical alignment. So we have that district-wide lens. So this graphic here is from, um, our My KIP system, that stands for Michigan Integrated Continuous Improvement Process, um, or Continuous Improvement Plan. Um, that is the site that we have to upload our plans into, it helps with accountability and just helps us document our work along the way. Um, but it's cyclical, and so the goal is to, you know, have something where we assess our needs, make those plans after we've identified those needs, implement those plans, and then monitor our growth along the way. And the difference between the old school improvement cycle and the continuous improvement cycle is it's, they're not really a due date. We put our own due dates based on what's meaningful to us, and we gauge our own progress along the way. But if we've met our goals in January, then we can move on, we don't, you know, wait till, uh, the end of the school year, it doesn't have to be in the same incremental times as as in the past. But we set meaningful goals along the way, and each building has some ownership, but those, the ownership within each building is coming from a common space, um, I guess harnessed in our district's vision and mission, so we're trying to get back of understanding what's important to us as a district, as Cedar Spring Public Schools, and honoring that as we build our, um, build our ship forward, I guess. So, um, I gave this example to our administrators when we were talking about this work, um, just the importance of alignment and systems work. Um, you know, last year, my son started taking showers in the morning, and that threw off my group, because I'm a morning shower, and we just have the, we have one shower. And so it was just really hard to sync that all together, and I could change something about what I did, he could change something about what he did, but without us working together, we weren't really impacting the system to make us more efficient getting out the door. So we had to look at our pieces as one, and similarly, that's what we've been doing as a district administrative team, along with our amazing administrators at every building. We've had some amazing leaders and amazing, um, staff members, educators doing amazing things. But it's hard when we look at that district data to see that that grow in our in our scores, because they might have the focus of reading, they might have the focus of math, they might have the focus of engagement. And when that translates to that district lens, when we weren't all working on the same thing, we weren't as as easy, it wasn't as easy to see that growth in one area. So we've had some amazing things, we're just trying to put that together into one, um, in our continuous improvement process. Uh, how do I go to the next slide?
Uh, should just be able to scroll down.
Oh, this, this, there we go. All right, so our goal, oh, the picture didn't come out very well, but our overall goal that we're harnessing all the work in is increasing academic achievement through whole child support. So we're here at school because we want kids to learn, and we want kids to be successful here at school, and sometimes that might work mean working on behavior and and social emotional things, attendance and those types of things. But that's all in the lens of helping be them be successful learners, so we want to monitor that academic achievement while supporting that whole child with all of those components. So this is just a graphic, it's straight from MDE's My KIP process of that traditional school improvement process, and this is what we've had going on, so this is, um, we used to have a school improvement team, and those were siloed in each building, and each building was, again, doing some amazing work. And then they'd inform the district, this is what my building plan is, can you insert that? Well, now, that new Michigan Continuous Improvement Process example is that that district team starts out with that district lens and then filters it down from there. So if we say we want to grow in reading as a district, now the next level would be how does reading look in each building, and they get to be a little more specific with reading goals in each building. And then the classrooms get to say, what's my ownership, what's my stake in that game with that lens of our building goal within reading? So that we can start with that district, so again, we can start with that common lens to move us all forward together. And so that process of working through those layers of the team, um, and then filtering those layers back and forth between the teams, and that communication and alignment is what's going to help them to need them. So as a part of this process, I created a comprehensive needs assessment, basically, it's all the data points you guys have been accustomed to be looking at and reading, um, about, plus more, um, all in one document. And we're hoping that we can present this at least once a year, maybe a couple times a year, depending, um, because some of our data points, like the PSAT and SAT are just once a year data points. So not a lot will change throughout each year, but the reason you put, um, together all those data points together into one document is you might think, oh, we have a reading achievement problem, that might be accurate. But then when you look at attendance rates, you might realize, oh, wow, attendance rates are poor, that could be contributing to poor reading achievement, right? So maybe we were targeting something, but maybe misaligning where that support should front load to maximize the benefit. So when we look at those points together, we can make a bigger difference. And so we are hoping that we can present to you guys, um, this comprehensive needs assessment on a regular basis, so you can see how all of those data points work together, and hopefully how our goals are making a difference.
The comprehensive needs assessment, it's also linked in the board book, that's a second part of that, and this section.
I was gonna, how do I, oh, go back to the agenda, I can pull it up, is that accurate?
You don't, you can.
Oh, I don't need to, okay, yeah, and you're welcome to look through that, it's got, um, information demographic data about our district as a whole, about our community, about our staff, and and our staff demographics, and you know, how many males, how many females, and those types of things, the level of experience, so lots of data points, again, that can come together for that big picture. So our administrators, district leaders, and as well as, um, building leaders all came together to look at that and then did a deep dive into where we see those gaps, and then discussed how those gaps might be overlapping and where to maximize our support. So, and elementary, these are the goals that they're focusing on. Cedar Trails wants to learn from each other through a learning lab model where they're going to be going into a lot of classrooms to see instructional best practices, to maximize what they do in their classroom spaces. As well as every building, you're going to see that, um, goal alignment, because again, the name of the game has been within this process, trying to align things, because oftentimes our PLCs might have been working on different goals than other layers of the pie, and we're gonna put those together this year. Um, Beach is going to be working on, um, differentiation, looking, zeroing in on those MTSS layers. So Beach, View, um, high school and middle school, you'll see in all, all four of those buildings have talked about their MTSS systems. Um, Beach and Cedar View have all both had some systems, but we're making an intentional, um, we're being more intentional about not just saying this student is low and has some needs, but what needs do they have and aligning them with support that's more specific, and same with Cedar View. Um, whereas in the high school and middle school, they're, um, working on building that HAWK time and SAW time, both of those are new to the high school and middle school, they've not had a time where they could proactively react to student achievement on a, um, quicker, um, level before, you know, they have had, high school has had credit recovery, so after a student fails, they need to not recover. But these systems in place are supposed to be proactive measures to prevent failures, um, so that we don't have to have as many reactive measures in place, and hopefully those students feel more supported, which will make their school experience more positive and hopefully increase the graduation, right? So middle school and high school, that's their huge deep dive this year. Um, and so they've got some really exciting things going on in that way. Um, after our teams, um, have had a chance to get settled, we're going to work on monitoring our plan all year. These questions are exactly from our My KIP system, so the team, the district team that will bring together will be responsible for monitoring those goals and reporting out on them, and these are the questions they'll have to answer for me to put into our My KIP system to document their progress, uh, throughout the year. Um, these are the data points we're going to zero in on, because those are the data points the administrators have pinpointed as the ones that they're hoping to target, um, and and make the biggest difference on within their, um, their goals that they've named. So those are the data points within that comprehensive needs assessment, we're hoping to see the biggest difference in in various ways, depending on the building.
Can you clarify the tiered fidelity?
Yes.
Sorry, that's one that's.
Sure, yeah, so, yep, I Ready is that benchmark you're used to seeing, I Excel Diagnostic, high school has not had a diagnostic assessment, it's like I Ready, but it's assessable for the high school. So high school this year will have access to an assessment similar to I Ready, to have more data points more frequently throughout the year, which is exciting. They also have that PSAT, SAT, which you're, you know of, grades and graduation rate we monitor as well. Um, Five D is our evaluation system, and that's not for the sake of, you know, sharing what everybody's score is, but to look at some of those common goals in our teaching staff as it pertains to evaluation, to align them also to our work. Um, and then the school system review and tiered fidelity inventory, those two are assessments that assess our systems. So, um, you know, what resources do we have, do we have a process for when we have adopt a new resource, providing proper training? Tiered Fidelity inventories talks about our processes for identifying students and making sure they're in the right, right place for their needs. So those, um, to evaluate our systems, which is what we use as a big part of our conversation to develop our goals for this year.
And the last two are like surveys that administrators and teachers take and then submit their impressions of how, if there, if the supports are in place and our students.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yep. And again, the our baseline data is in the comprehensive needs assessment, so you can see where we fell for the last, this last year. So alignment, again, is the name of the game this year, we're wanting to, we're aligning our data cycles because we can't have a meeting to talk about how our kids are doing if we don't have the data yet. So we're trying to be cognizant to schedule meetings, it, um, in a way that aligns with our data cycles, so that we know we have these data points, and then we provide that collaboration around that data point to assess those needs and move forward. Um, and then our meeting dates, obviously, that we align to that time to collaborate, it all needs to be in sync, or else, you know, we'll just be meeting just to smile at each other, that wouldn't be the best use of time. So, uh, timeline, I, um, gave this to all of the administrators and PLC leads. Um, so here's just a snapshot of what we're looking at, so our, um, building level work is that MTSS BOI beginning of year, so we're, we should have all of our data, beginning of year data by that week or within that week sometime. So we're hoping to have our, um, building level teams meet that week. And then that will allow, um, our PLCs on the nineteenth to talk about the goals that the MTSS teams have now, um, nailed down or determined for their building, um, and then they can make those goals into like classroom or content-specific goals, again, to have us working together on the same things. And then our DIT stands for District Improvement Team, so after that, those layers have that goal, we're going to talk about the district improvement team and their role in the pie. Um, and then we'll give you a board update on October twenty-ninth on just the work that's been done. So, um, we've been trying to be cognizant about that timeline, so that all those dates are in sync to maximize the work that we're doing. That's about it, do you guys have any questions?
I'll just add that, uh, last Thursday in this very room, we had all the MTSS coaches, uh, PLC leaders and DIT team members, um, invited to a meeting where we spent a good portion of time going through the My KIP plan with them, you know, not only did we share with our Philly admin during our MGM time on Tuesday, but also all these leaders, so we fully get implemented, a good understanding of how My KIP is the basis and foundation of the work that we do, and then all the other support systems that we have in place in the district really help to grow from there with the overarching umbrella of MTSS. So, uh, we've got everybody in tune with the work that we're going to be doing, and it was well received that day.
Question, so you mentioned upriver that if the state wants us to, is anybody in the state looking, or is the process the actual thing in the.
I, there are some, there are some random audits, and especially as it pertains to our grant funds, like, well, we have to, part of the circle is after we assess our needs and develop our plans and we align funds. So funds are supposed to come after all of that, because in order to allocate our grant funds, it's supposed to be aligned to our needs. So it will be reviewed after, when we are audited on those grant funds, and then probably, you know, they could at any point in time just randomly audit us on that, but I think it will probably come into play more with the grant funds. Yeah. Yeah, no problem.
Quick plug for Kristen, she's been a tremendous add to our team, very, very knowledgeable about, uh, curriculum and, uh, and everything school improvement, so she's done a fantastic job. Uh, sometimes I mistakenly get credit for her work, so I'm just, you know, letting letting him be known that she's doing a great job. Um, the other thing, I'm I'm going to give her a little jab now too, because that's what I most like to do. Um, she used a lot of amazings at the start of her presentation, and one thing that we know, because we've had visitors tell us, hey, your data doesn't look so amazing to us, okay? We don't disagree with that, and so, you know, it's often that, you know, we don't get to say, hey, we agree with you public, um, we've got some work to do, and and we're not shy about saying that. Um, we're not where we want to be yet. Um, and so one of the things that we're going to really focus on is, um, is elementary literacy. We, having only six out of ten elementary students proficient, year after year, is not going to get it done. Okay, and our research says that if kids leave first grade, I know that seems really early, because it's just the first building they started. But if they leave first grade at less than proficiency, they struggle mightily to catch up. And so, uh, Beach hasn't, you know, been super successful in catching them up. Cedar View hasn't been super successful at catching them up, that's really not the focus of their curriculum. And so that becomes a challenge that, you know, I I don't want to put it all on Cedar Trails, it's just the starting point. And when they're leaving first grade at sixty percent proficiency, we know that that's going to be an issue. And so we're really going to, uh, pinpoint that, and the other thing we're going to encourage principals to do is share with the board, here are the challenges we're seeing, here's what we're doing about it. So that you've, you know, feel good that you're in the know, um, as to how they're addressing those needs and that they're identifying. And so we'll help them with that, um, but we really want them to be able to focus on those things with all of you this year.
Any other question?
This, that is very helpful, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to discussion and receiving financial update with Ron.
All right, thank you, uh, so we are still in the process of closing, uh, we have Y twenty-four, twenty-five school year, um, so this, uh, at the September board meeting, I will have a actual budget, actual, and final report for you that, um, that actually the auditors are starting on September, September eighth, so uh, you will see the numbers that the auditors will be, uh, start digging through and performing their year-end audit work on. Couple of quick updates, um, still no state aid school budget. Um, it is starting to look more and more like that it will be closer to the October first deadline for the state's fiscal year. Uh, it's also a very real possibility that the state will, uh, have a state government shutdown, and we will not have a budget, um, until sometime in October. That was lightning impact when we received our first twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six state aid payments that's scheduled to go out in October twenty, so likely we would not receive that payment then until November twenty. So we could potentially go from mid-October to mid-November without receiving any state aid, uh, payments. One thing to highlight is, you know, we do elect to do one hundred percent summer tax collections, so that does help. Uh, in a normal year, that helps offset the fact that we don't receive any state aid payments in the month of September. So doing that one hundred percent summer tax collection will definitely help, um, offset any potential cash flow issues, uh, as well as having a very healthy fund balance, so I'm not overly concerned at this time that the payment could be, uh, pushed into November. Uh, but if it starts getting even further, obviously, that would be very alarming. It does appear, a lot of the discussion around the budget is also incorporated with the the federal budget. Uh, it does appear that the, uh, bill that was passed back in July will impact the state's general fund, general purpose budget. Um, one report estimates they have to, uh, cut about one point one billion dollars from their eighty-four billion dollar budget. The real impact on school aid fund would be if they decide to borrow from the school aid fund to fill some, um, shortfalls to the general fund, general purpose budget, so be giving an eye on that. Um, and then finally, uh, Um, and then finally, uh, uh, last Thursday, I emailed each of you. We reported you the um audit questionnaire and audit engagement letter. Um, so if you haven't seen that yet, please check your emails. It's also included in board book. Um, and go ahead and review both those documents and send that questionnaire directly back to our auditors. Um, I provided the two product partners emails.
The superintendent's meeting, county vice superintendent's meeting on Friday, and one of the agenda items was, you know, fourteen. Um, potentially working together as as a grouping of districts who are indeed borrowing to. Uh, make ends meet and something that the state uh can improve. So the idea there was, you know, four or five districts come together, can they get a better rate from a bank? Uh, borrowing the larger sum of money. Um, so it is very real and very unsettling.
Uh, one thing, one question you may have received from uh community members, we've started to receive it. It's related to will there be uh, will we continue to offer university free breakfast and lunch? Um, unfortunately, the answer is for the entire school year at this point. Uh, we're uncertain if that will be included in the budget. Uh, uh, the state did release a memo last week that I just saw today. The the funding that we currently have does go through September thirtieth. So we should be able to continue offering the the free breakfast and free lunch through September thirtieth. Um, and we'll have to make a decision on how to handle that going forward if we still do not have a budget. Um, so I'll be connecting with Holly to see what the food service directors have been discussing various options as well.
So my like, um, my daughter graduated, so I had like a surplus of seventeen dollars. If I don't cash that, can I can that go in some sort of fund? Like if we don't offer that universally?
Uh, you can donate that, yes.
Okay, so like, okay.
We have to uh.
I just don't cash it or is that going to?
If you don't cash it, it sits on our outstanding check registry.
Okay.
So. We prefer.
Cash it, okay.
That doesn't bother the accountants at all.
And if you don't cash it for three or four, five years, then we have to.
I'll just cash it and then just don't bring it back and there you go. Okay. Maybe we could put something on our website or something of saying that if people or like this year's or, I don't know, just. I hope we get the funding, but if we don't, I just, I don't want anyone to want.
Hmm, I agree. When I think the free and reduced component will not, I don't I don't see that necessarily going away.
Oh, okay.
But the universal free lunch and breakfast may not be a program that's funded by the state in the fall.
Okay.
So individuals who are economically challenged, you know, there there should still be a provision. In the in the federal, either federal or state government or state budget to support that. But it may not get a universal program now.
Yeah, yeah, so we will be pushing uh reminding families to throw out the family assistance questionnaire as with. Kind of drive whether or not they qualify for free and reduced lunch. Uh, the the current program, the way it works is if a family qualifies at the federal level for free or free or reduced lunch. Now, if they're free, then the federal government provides that funding. If they're reduced, the federal government who provides, let's say fifty percent, the state pays the other fifty. And then if families that don't qualify for either, that's where the state comes in and provides funding, make it free across the board.
Okay.
So yes, the the free and reduced lunch component at the federal level. Uh, you can dump it, just pay that going way.
Okay.
The state portion, will they have enough funds? Or do they choose to continue that program?
Alright, thank you. When we add a discussion, I am reading spring December twenty twenty five, the yellow policy recommendations that didn't read.
Yeah, so the second read, again, is the progressive body of work. Um, the first read was just more introductory in nature. Um, now we're digging into a little bit, had a couple of questions from individuals regarding the some of the why or the legislative rationale. Behind some of the proposed changes. One document that is very helpful in this uh collection of documents is the um in in the very first component. The overview document. So um it's the first one is in board book, the spring twenty twenty five, meow, meola policy update overview. Um, opening that document will give you a a one or two sentence why behind the trend of the change. Unless there's a greater explanation needed. So at least that might help answer some of your more simple questions. So um there was a question about its meaningization and the why is changes in the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services policies. So it's just aligned with our policy with their policy. So um it 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 can be a nice way for you to, you know, get some frequently asked questions answered. Um, or you can always reach out if you've got specific questions around language. Is there anything that's really jumping off the table right now that I can make sure that we can do further detail on September thirty?
Um, it'd be eight, the only way would be thirty four sixty, the emergency and blah blah.
Okay.
Um, that one, you said you updated some grounds to add, regarding. Decisions to consider building student. On ten days to forty five, I think consulting for president. How is that? This will be have gold to be able to make sure his words are correct way.
Uh, yeah, and it would be, that is illegal. Um, it is permissible. Um, because the board would be taking a more generalized action, but I can get more clarity on that um from Marshall Gray on that.
What is the reasoning behind including just the board president?
The thinking was um, there would be a connection to the board. Really, they're just isolated cases. Um, say we've got a student in November who's really gone through some difficult things. We don't want to suspend them for the remainder of the year. Um, we're just looking to suspend that or give them a break until the beginning of the second semester. So the idea is to simplify the process a little bit. Um, consult with the president of the board, work with the superintendent. Uh, but maybe not bring into a full uh full blown um board's hearing. Um, if we're not suspending for for longer than a shorter, you know.
Once you're digging to it, typically that happens like before Christmas break or at year end. Those are the typical times. And because sometimes our meeting calendar doesn't match what's been worked for that situation.
No, is that something like you said, talking to the board president, because that's something that you would relate to the rest of the board. Take this just kind of part of them. Or is this something that's coming between you and Scott? Or president? I know, that's just my question that I've heard one.
Yeah, that's, those are great questions. We want to keep the board informed. We don't want to be secret. Um.
So this had, you know, so this type of, so this had to, you know, right, or this, this is the why, maybe you know. And where.
Here's.
I was curious what AP said, they was issue with. So there's a, usually this is policy and usually we kind of tie it back to the why. Um, but there's a paragraph that kind of starts that one off, it starts with the board of education believes. That's a, that's a belief statement. I I kind of a fan of if it's required by the state, just to start with, that's where it says that students must meet this requirement sent by the state. Like take that belief statement out, you know, there's that that's making a belief statement for every individual on the board. It may or may not be accurate, I would step that.
That will be my regard as well, that belief statement, another part, yes.
Good catch.
Yeah.
One of my wonders was in the wellness policy. And there might be an opportunity to um, you know, remind everybody that preseason not being used as a reward or punishment. If this activity were to. And that will also lead to, um, there's number six. Um, under C, you know, talks about activities such as tutoring, funding shall not be scheduled during meal times. Most students may be during those meetings. It just is, it just spells it out there and we're not going to. All classes have any understandings during the year, you know, for the whole class, this is always happening online. When I. But I mean, think about that. And we know, you know, research too, sometimes the most active people in classroom meetings, they are the best.
My son, maybe he's twenty nine, his third grade teacher had his class in on a regular basis because. Another student was in an eight dollar a class and and being with the home, that I don't have any control over with this. But I have to, but I'm being honest, so I did that, yeah.
I know, and then there's all those things you check. I didn't overlook them too, I didn't. Yeah, we've done a couple of ones. I think this is, we're going to take actually October, so that will be called. Or reduce. If they want to talk about it, it's now. Alright, we'll move on then to technology refresh, fire wall replacement, stat, not the arts, clean. What's going on there and that is on for actions.
Yeah, they believe, you don't think that they believe?
Yeah, I think they believe. Um, so back in October, uh, Colin presented a FCC administrative pilot program. Uh, related to our replacing our firewall system. Um, so we had received some initial estimates of the cost. Um, the the total amounts were would have exceeded or as uh approval threshold. But because with the E rates discount, it would have brought it below that threshold. So we did not ask for approval at that time because what we were actually going to be paying out was less than what required uh approval by the board. Um, well, so we submitted the application for February. Um, the FCC is currently reviewing that, all applications. Uh, it sounds like they are about two thirds of the way through uh reviewing and approving applications. Sounds like they haven't, they approved everything that they looked at, but ours is towards the bottom of that uh stat. Uh, so Colin brought this to our attention on Thursday. The issue is our current firewall software will be expiring. Um, but it actually has already expired. We're using a temporary license through the ISD. And Sentinel is will try to get us an additional thirty day uh extension on the software. But we're getting to the point where we have to replace our firewall, sell the new one and. Get a new software subscription in place where we will be operating without firewall. We still cannot definitively tell you when the FCC will approve this application. We feel confident that it will. Um, but so we did have it bid out, uh, we received two bids. Sentinel was the low bid for this firewall at thirty three thousand nine hundred and nine dollars. Uh, Vector Technology was the other bidder, their bid was forty two thousand nine hundred dollars. Um, based on the application, this is, this project is forty four percent. Uh, E rate eligible, so we would receive a total discount of fourteen thousand nine hundred nineteen dollars and ninety six cents. And our net cost would be eighteen thousand nine hundred eighty nine dollars and four cents. So the the eighteen nine eighty nine is absolutely less than the order group threshold. But to guarantee that we have the unit in place up and running prior to the um. The expiration of our current uh firewall protection. We need to give them a go no go uh this week. So once we have assessed that, like, well, we need to present this to the board tonight for action. So that we can get it up and running and be uh be protected. Because uh in today's day and age, we really cannot operate without a firewall. Uh, the 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 threat and liability would just be too, we'd be too exposed to bad actors. So so the the ask is that we receive board approval tonight to proceed with the Sentinel quote of thirty three thousand nine hundred and nine dollars. Uh. If and when approved, we would then receive a rebate from Sentinel for uh fourteen thousand nine hundred nineteen dollars and ninety six cents. So the net cost of the project would be the just shy of nineteen thousand dollars.
Just a question, how long is the temporary license for the ISD?
Um, I want to say Colin said they grew this week. And he's working with Sentinel to get thirty days. Okay, so uh, once you brought it to our attention, means that either act numbers are equivalent.
So when we approve it tonight, we can get the firewall go.
We can.
Correct. And then all the backside work comes for the review, oh no, oh get it coming based on actions.
Yes, that's FCC has the application, it is, there's a pile of.
And that's where the rebate comes.
That's where the rebate comes from.
Got it.
E rate is quite amusing, complicated. But we we haven't done other projects where we paid the whole whole cost upfront and then you receive a a rebate and it's. At the end of the year, when you look at the books, it's a net cost of eighteen thousand.
Well, the question I'll say that we didn't get the rebate, so we can.
Correct.
The rebate stays in the case.
And we have done for the E rate process, we do have to bid it out. So we we didn't uh, we didn't follow the bid process that was handled by our. E rate consultants, their E funds, their E funds.
One more question, so if this temporary uh through the ISD is open good for this week, and I know we're working on thirty day like that, I'll be concerned that we're at risk. And even if we approve this tonight, can we get this like turn around in the week? Or I would be pretty confident we're going to get that thirty day attention.
I think we're we're confident we'll get the uh Sentinel will take care of us.
And I was wondering if that based on the dates that are in this letter, because the dates in the letter suggest April is start date and we're in August, so.
Yeah, we anticipated the E rate approval months ago.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, I miss read. Remember, the initial proposal was back that October.
Yeah.
So I'm allergic to Chris, Chris would, for every name I'm not special for. Thank you, my, it looks, you know, just. Alrighty, twenty twenty five, twenty six, open on field trip requests.
So we have two field trip requests um for your consideration. Um, the first, and I know Todd wants to share a thing. Um, it's the um Michigan Association of Student Councils and Michigan Association of Honor Society's State Leadership Conference. Which takes place uh in late January, February on an annual basis. Uh, this conference is in Grand Rapids and the high school team is just asking you to consider. Um, permitting them to take another group of our students. Um, permitting them to take another group of our students down, uh, to this conference. While it is a short distance away, it's still an overnight conference. Uh, because much of the experience for the student years is having that opportunity to engage. Um, it's just a fun, it's like, just a cool thing to do when you're a high school student. Um, and it's also, you know, a lot of the, um. A lot of the programming does go later into the evening, uh, so it just enables them to stay, uh, right in a, a constant location, uh. Use the saver, use some more. Anything else, Mr. Simmons?
No, sir.
Okay, perfect. Um, the second, uh, request is, uh, you'll note, we have just a, a list of, um, trips that are anticipated. Trips for, uh, twenty five, twenty six school year from our athletic program, um. None of these are guaranteed, but it just is, our current po- uh, policy language requires overnight field trips to be approved by the board. Um, the proposed new language in the, you know, update is that the superintendent can approve, um. Trips that are, uh, MHSAA related or athletic related, where we don't have the window of approval, so. You know, in, in many cases during the sports season, you'll win a game on weekend A and you've got. Be up north in the U P the following weekend and meeting accommodations where the board meeting is scheduled during that time. So in those instances, it would allow us some flexibility, um, but in the event that that doesn't get changed. These are, uh, we're just approving these in the event that we could qualify, these are, uh. Uh, tournaments and levels of the MHSAA, uh, state level tournament that we've achieved in the past. So we're just putting on the radar for some please, uh, preemptive approvals. And those will both be, uh, will be seeking action in September. So that's why, uh, like on the athletic field trips, uh, there's limited, um, detail. Because we don't know where they would go, where they would stay, how many athletes would be going, um. So. Checks the box of approval. And we could provide all those details for the, for the debate.
Okay. Alright, we'll see that again, let's move on to discussion, I am changing the bond instruction update.
So, um, you know, one of the questions that came up during our tour at beach was will this building be done, or will this building be finished and able for us to open? Um, it's a great question, it's been asked many, many times over the last few weeks. Uh, they're making incredible progress and there is literally an army of, uh, contractors on site. The new portions of the building in beach, they will be ready. Um, you know, really there are some superficial things that can be completed, and then it's just the manual labor involved with moving some furniture up to that third level, um. We're waiting on the, uh, permitting of the, um. Elevator, that will make the moving process so much easier, but, uh, knowing that's still out there, we are starting to just physically. Uh, carry, uh, desks and things upstairs, uh, to the second level. So, uh, beach really isn't, um, you know, that, they, they delivered on all of their other. Project promises so far, you know, they delivered on getting the middle school ready, when we redid the drives. They delivered on getting the high school ready, when we did that major renovation, uh, remodel of this space. And remember this once by the time was the office, I think Bron's office was above where Diana's sitting right now. Um, you know, so they delivered project after project, they delivered on our front classroom addition, so. Uh, we're going to trust that they're going to deliver on beach and on our waiting room, uh, and, uh, and here at the high school as well. Um, so they're doing their, uh, the parking lot area, and see your view is ready to go. Uh, they're going to do their first coat of asphalt for the beach parking lots on Wednesday, uh, is the plan, um. So I think we're really heading in the right direction, um, we did, uh. In, in the counter, another hiccup with the cold storage building. Um, so even though the structure is complete, we cannot get occupancy through the building until, uh, there's a paved walkway. Um, to the structure for ADA compliance, so that's, um, that's where we are right now with the inspector, we've. Been working back and forth in terms of, are there different interpretations of, uh, hard surface walkways? So for example, Triangle Construction was able to work with inspector on several of their city park projects. And they use crushed, uh, asphalt as their base. And that was permissible to that inspector, to our inspector, nope. But this comment was, well, that's another person's interpretation, that's not my interpretation. So right now, it's looking like, uh, we were working back and forth, again, the team from Triangle was really, uh, really going to back for us. You know, we thought about, would it be possible for us to pave, just do an asphalt driveway up to the, you know, the overhead doors. Um, and the latest word today was no, that's not sufficient, they want a specific walkway. Uh, that leads from the sidewalk up to that building, so that's kind of where we are right now. It's so ironic, it's such a, it's like the, the thorn in lion's paw, uh, it's such a little thing, but wow, it is so irritating. Um, but we'll keep you posted.
Setting, I mean, and so that's, that's where it's down to, and then most of the other I have, I guess.
We should get occupancy once they have a paved path, paved walkway to that building.
I guess, why wouldn't the paved highway be a walkway also, like, I guess.
He calls it their firewall for, and they're looking at it, they break it all down, it's a whole.
Oh.
It's not a separate site at all.
Right. Absolutely.
Okay.
And they're just doing their job, they're not trying to.
I was just wondering, I. Alright, keep going.
Yes. Questions? Alright, we'll move on, um, next up, we have public comments, it's the time for the board of year from the public for three minutes. This is thus, do we have any forms to do speak for? Have a, none, we will close public comment, really don't have any papers right now, to address the board. That brings us to our action item for this evening, is the technology refresh by your wall update. And I'm entertaining motion for to proceed with a Sentinel quote. Was attached to the board book for the amount of thirty three thousand nine hundred and nine dollars. And the rebate, we can come in after that.
So I move to accept the proposal, uh, for thirty three thousand nine oh nine. Uh, while we wait the FCC approval of the, had the agreement.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Satya.
Okay. Dr. Sawyer?
Yes.
Treasury Bill Warren?
Yes.
President Line?
Yes.
President Bowser?
Yes.
As we're agreeing, yes, thank you, motion clear, so we can get that firewall. Alright, then for communication for the board, I don't have anything specific. Um, did you know, I printed it out, at first I was just like, weren't you courageous, but that was just, um, events for twenty five, twenty six month. So the calendars are in the heads, huh, there you go, so that, that was there. And then for planning, our September eighth board meeting, Mr. Smith, do you have any follow-ups?
Uh, yeah, so under communication, I did have an attachment, so one of the pieces of feedback that the board gave during my evaluation was. Have a more regularly scheduled calendar of updates, um, for the board, and so LinkedIn, you'll see, um. By department and by building, uh, who will be coming to provide you with. Uh, five to ten minute updates and what meetings they'll be coming, uh, to. And so, you know, there may be some changes here and there, you'll see that you'll be, uh, getting an update from each department. Uh, three times per year, and then you'll be getting an update from each building three times per year. Um, and then we'll provide additional updates as needed, but at least that way to get something on a very regular basis that's scheduled out. So hopefully that matches, uh, with what you were looking for, but it definitely gives more opportunity for, uh, engagement with our leaders, uh. But also to give you a chance to get a better sense of what's happening. Okay, um, and then, um, also under communication, I listed the district events, so that's the annual. Calendar of everything right now that's in the schedule, that's in the queue. Um, and so that's a, like Heidi said, that's a pretty significant document, but. As you'll, as you'll watch, you know, you'll get this in board fact every month, you know, you'll see these large groups of items. Being, you know, uh, crossed out because we're going to move really quickly through that list and. Before we know it, it's going to be March, uh, or April, or the end of the year. Um, so that'll be an ongoing piece of information, education you can use for your planning. Uh, and then lastly, we did get communication over the summer, um, it actually went to my spam and to Barb's spam. They got a new person working at M A S B, um, the call to delegates is, um. Something that you want on an annual basis, uh, they want our representative from Cedar Springs. To be identified for the fall conference, um, by October second. Uh, and so in order for us to get, uh, that completed, we've got the, the one meeting in September, so. Communication side of things, if you're interested in being the representative for Cedar Springs Public Schools. Uh, at the fall, uh, delegate assembly, uh, please be thinking about that, and then we'll, um. Take action, uh, it'll be presented for discussion and then also for action at the September meeting, so that we can beat their timeline. Uh, for October two, typically it's the end of October. And so we have, uh, a variety, a number of, of meetings that we can use to discuss it, that they've bumped up their. Uh, required, but their request data to October second. Uh, I don't know if they moved their conference ahead a little bit this year or a lot back. That would be on the table for both discussion and action in September.
That's it?
Um.
There we have it. We don't have any other kind of course, we include our agenda, so we've no more business to force, so we can just say we turn at seven eighteen.